Studious.
Scholarly.
I needed a lot of help in that regard.
Chris looks scholarly.
I was patterning myself after Councilmember Stern's glasses.
That's right.
Oh, he took his off.
That's interesting. You look at all of us except Robin. We all wear glasses now.
Yeah.
Robin, do you wear glasses?
No, I don't. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Robyn.
Hi, guys.
I use my glasses only to see.
Fine, help me think.
All right. Good evening. It doesn't sound quite the same from here as it does up there. Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting of the City Council for December 6, 2021, to order. The public participation Auburn City Council meeting will be held in person and virtually. We will now ask that the the color guard, honor guard come in.
Color guard. Attention. Attention. Fire. 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 Right. Fire. Color guard. Bow. Left. Face. Ready? Right.
If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its fellow citizens. To God, indivisible, with great peace and justice for all. And you please be seated.
Color guard. Right. Face. Our arch. Fire. 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 Fire.
And Sean, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember J-Rod?
On the floor.
Councilmember Malanga?
Here.
Councilmember Stern?
Here.
Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Here.
All right. Thank you, Sean. And this evening, under announcements, proclamations, and presentations, as most of you know, because I believe that's why you are here, is the police promotional ceremony. We have three promotions this evening, and I would like to call Chief Callier up to perform those promotions.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, yes. Tonight, we'll be making three promotions to three individuals who joined our leadership team and made the commitment to be leaders within our department. So first, I'm going to call Sergeant Jason Blake. Jason started his career with Auburn Police Department in April of 2003. He is currently a master police officer. During his time as an officer, he was assigned to the patrol. He was a detective in both the property crimes unit, major crimes unit, and was also a member of the community response team. His collateral duties have included field training officer, the civil disturbance unit, the crime scene team, and he's currently a team leader for the Valley Hostage Negotiations Team. Second, I'm going to call up Commander James Nordinger. James started his law enforcement career in 1996 in the city of Newport, Washington, before coming to the city of Auburn in January of 1999. During his time as an officer, he worked as a field training officer, a SWAT team member, a defensive tactics, use of force instructor, an honor guard member, and was a motorcycle officer in the traffic unit. In 2006, James was promoted to the rank of sergeant. He supervised the patrol, major crimes unit, administrative services, and the traffic unit. He is a graduate of Northwestern University School of Police Staff in Command, the Leadership Institute and the Leadership Institute of South Puget Sound. Currently, in his role as commander, he's been assigned to lead our investigations division. I'm going to call up Assistant Chief Sam Betts. Sam began his career with the Auburn Police Department in 2006. Sam has worked as a patrol officer, a canine handler, a special investigations detective, and was a member of Valley SWAT. Sam was promoted to sergeant in June of 2013, where he supervised the patrol division, the major crimes unit, and then became a team leader on Valley SWAT. In January of 2020, Sam was promoted to commander, where he supervised patrol and the inspectional services division. In his role as commander, he also served as the lead commander for all Valley agencies for the SWAT team. I'm going to deliver the oath of honor. Yes, turn and face me. Raise your right hand, please. Today, I pledge my commitment
Today, I pledge my commitment
to the Auburn Police Department and to the city of Auburn.
To the city of Auburn.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge,
I will never betray my badge.
my integrity, my character,
my character.
or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I value leadership
I value leadership.
and I accept the tremendous responsibility
I accept the tremendous responsibility.
that comes with that privilege.
That comes with that privilege.
I will always demonstrate the courage
I will always demonstrate the courage.
to hold myself and others accountable.
To hold myself and others accountable.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
and the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
as well as the mission
as well as the mission.
the guiding principles
guiding principles.
and the history of the Auburn Police Department.
And the history of the Auburn Police Department.
Next thing we're going to do is the pinning of the badge. The tradition of badge painting is a significant one. It is one of the things where we visibly and clearly bring a loved one up to publicly demonstrate their support for their law enforcement officer. This support is essential, as our officers can't do this difficult job well without the strong support from family and friends. The badge itself represents the authority granted by our community of law enforcement officers. It is in the shape of a shield, signifying our core responsibility to protect those who cannot protect themselves. Pinning Sergeant Jason Blake's badge will be his wife, Jory. Jory, if you can come on up. Pinning Commander Nordinger's badge on is his wife, Simone. Simone, if you can come on up. And pinning Assistant Chief Sam Betts' badge on is his wife, Tyanne, and his daughter, Seth. Thank you. Please join me in recognizing our newest members of our leadership team.
Gentlemen, congratulations on your promotions. This is a time when our communities need you, your integrity, your leadership. We will be counting on you to serve our community as you have with dignity and respect. We are now going to take a five-ish minute break for families to have photos. And then council, okay, it's a five. Do you want to do 10? Let's do 10. Let's do 10. We'll do a 10-minute break for families to have photos. Council, we will reconvene in 10 minutes. Thank you.
We have five. Did we lose some counsel? Oh, six. She's not on camera.
Deputy Mayor DeCoursey, can you turn your camera back on, please?
Might not be back yet. There we go.
Sorry about that. I had something else on the screen. I couldn't do that.
All right, we will call the City Council meeting for December 6, 2021, back to order. And congratulations again for our newly promoted officers. And a huge thank you for the work that they have done to get to this point in their careers. And also a prepaid appreciation for the work that they will continue to do on behalf of the city. Sean, do we have any agenda modifications this evening? All right, so we will move to new business council. We typically don't have anything under the new business item, but tonight we do, and that is the selection of a deputy mayor for 2022. As our city attorney shared last week, there is a process by which we by which council selects a new deputy mayor. And I will just read through some of this so that it's a refresher for you. Annually or more often, this is under Section 12 of the Council Rules of Procedure. Annually or more often, as deemed appropriate, the members of the City Council, by a majority vote, shall designate one of their members as deputy mayor for a one-year time period, except as provided in Section 12.1, Paragraphes G and H. Elections will be held no later than the last council meeting of the year. Section A, any member of the City Council who will have served on the council for one year at the beginning for that council member's term as deputy mayor may be nominated for the position of deputy mayor by having that council member's name placed in nomination by a council member. The nomination of a council member for the position of deputy mayor does not require a second, and a council member may nominate themselves. Nominations for the position of deputy mayor shall be made by members of the City Council on the dates of election for the deputy mayor position. In connection with the selection of deputy mayor, it is strongly suggested the council members approach the election in an open, transparent, and respectful manner, avoiding anything that jeopardizes harmony among council members. The council member receiving a majority of the votes cast by the members of the City Council shall be elected deputy mayor. A council member may vote for him or herself. The names of all nominees for the position of deputy mayor shall be included in the vote. If no single council member receives a majority of the votes cast, a second vote or ballot between the two nominees who received the largest number of votes will be held. The deputy mayor shall serve at the pleasure of the council. In the event of the absence or unavailability of the deputy mayor, the senior member of the City Council other than the deputy mayor shall serve as interim deputy mayor until the return of the regular deputy mayor. If the designated deputy mayor is unable to serve the full term of the position of deputy mayor, the council shall designate the next senior member of the City Council as deputy mayor for the remainder of the term. If the appointment is declined, the process shall continue until a deputy mayor is designated. In the event that the council member selected as deputy mayor is unable to perform the duties of the position of deputy mayor or fails to act in accordance with City Council Rules of Procedure, the City Council may, by a majority vote of the full City Council, remove the deputy mayor from this position, in which case the next senior council member shall assume the position of deputy mayor for the balance of the year. If the next senior council member is unwilling or unable to assume the position of deputy mayor, the position of deputy mayor shall be filled by a majority vote of the full City Council. All right, at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for deputy mayor for 2022. Are there any nominations? Make sure, see if I can. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to nominate Councilmember Chris Sterns.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Deputy Mayor DeCoursey? And you are muted, deputy mayor.
Sorry about that. I will place the name of Councilmember James J-Rod as nominee for deputy mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I submit the nomination for deputy mayor for Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the floor this evening? All right, so since we are remote, I'm going to assume that we need a by-name vote. Is that correct? All right, so the first nomination was for Councilmember Sterns. So this is how this is going to work, council members. I will I will call the name of the council member that was nominated. I will ask all those in favor of Councilmember Sterns, J-Rod, Trout Manuel, all in favor, please say aye. And I will ask, well, let's see. No? They can raise their hands? All right. And so it's just the in favor of, correct? I do not need an opposed. All right, at this time, council, all those in favor of Councilmember Sterns as deputy mayor for 2022, please raise your hand. All right, we have Councilmember Malanga, Councilmember Brown, and Councilmember Sterns. All right. Next, thank you. You can put, you may put your hand down. Next, all those in favor of Councilmember J-Rod as deputy mayor, please raise your hand. We have two votes. votes, councilmember J. Raj and deputy mayor Decourcy. And now those in favor of councilmember Trout Manual as deputy mayor, please raise your hand. All right, we have councilmember Baggett and councilmember Trout Manual. So no council member received a majority of those voting, so Kendra, typically it's the two that receive the most votes are the two that go through. In this case, we don't have that luxury. So do we vote again and see if there are any changes? Do we vote on the two that received the lowest number of votes?
My recommendation, mayor, is that we vote one more time for councilmember Sterns, councilmember J. Raj, and councilmember Trout Manual. If the votes do not change and they remain that the two. Yes, correct. A candidate has three and then two and then two. At that time, we would do a runoff with those two council members receiving two votes so that we can get a top two for a final runoff.
All right, and councilmembers, if we if we do a runoff, that doesn't necessarily mean that that remains your vote in the final vote tabulation. It's simply to get the top two vote getters. Councilmember J. Raj, you're there we go. Now you're on the screen. We didn't see you on the screen. For some reason, you are. There we go. That looks better. Oh, deputy mayor Decourcy.
If I may, your honor, can I make a comment?
Please.
Having served as deputy mayor these past two years, there is a lot that we know that this job entails. And I know every council member knows and understands the roles and responsibility of the position of deputy mayor. However, I do want to state that the most important potential responsibility of the deputy mayor is to be able to, at a moment's notice, if the time ever comes, or if the time ever comes, to step into the role as the mayor of the city of Auburn until there's a new selection of a new mayor. I don't believe mayor that's ever happened in the city. Not looking at that would happen again. But again, the deputy mayor has to be positioned and ready to assume. That assumption is to basically be the CEO of a quarter of a billion dollar municipal corporation, the city of Auburn. Have a responsibility, as I believe Mayor Bacchus will attest to, and know that with that commitment comes not only a ton of responsibility, but the responsibility of the well-being of every resident in the city of Auburn. So I just wanted to put that out there as we vote for, in my opinion, for the most qualified to be selected as deputy mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to do this again. I will do this in the same order that we did the first time. Those of you in favor of councilmember Sterns as deputy mayor for 2022, please raise your hand. All right, we have three votes, councilmembers Malanga, Sterns, and Brown. Next is councilmember J. Raj. All those in favor of councilmember J. Raj, please raise your hand. We have two deputy mayor Decourcy and councilmember J. Raj. All those in favor of councilmember Trout Manual, please raise your hand. And we have two, councilmember Trout Manual and councilmember Baggett. All right, so we are going to have a runoff for the second position to be on the final ballot. And that will be councilmembers Trout Manual and Baggett. You may put your hand down for now. Thank you. So at this point in time, we are going to ask you not for your final vote on who you would like to see as deputy mayor, but of councilmember J. Raj and councilmember Trout Manual, which one you would like to see go to the final ballot. Under is that understood? Any questions for clarification? All right, I am going to ask those who would like to see councilmember J. Raj on the final ballot, please raise your hand now. All right, we have councilmember Malanga, councilmember Brown, councilmember J. Raj, and councilmember Sterns. I see that as four votes. And now those who would like to see councilmember J. Raj, if you could lower your hand, please. All right, those who would like to see councilmember Trout Manual on the final ballot, please raise your hand. All right, we have councilmember Baggett, councilmember Trout Manual, and deputy mayor Decourcy. It would appear that it will be a final ballot between councilmember Sterns and councilmember J. Raj. All right. Now, this is the final ballot. We don't I don't believe there will be any ties because there are seven council members. And I don't believe there can be an abstention on this. Is that correct? That is correct. All right, all of those in favor of councilmember Sterns as deputy mayor for 2022, please raise your hand. All right, we have councilmember Malanga, councilmember Brown, and councilmember Sterns. All right, thank you. And now councilmember, there we go, all those who got it. All right, all those who would like to see councilmember J. Raj as deputy mayor for 2022, please raise your hands. No, we can't have a tie. There's still one that hasn't voted. Councilmember Trout Manual, I don't believe you have voted yet. And councilmember Trout Manual, that makes four votes for councilmember J. Raj to be deputy mayor for 2022. Congratulations, deputy mayor-elect J. Raj. And I would like to share my appreciation for deputy mayor Decourcy for his years in that leadership role. As he said, it can be a challenging role. I know you have all worked very closely with deputy mayor Decourcy. And I appreciate the collaborative style and willingness to listen that deputy mayor Decourcy has provided for the last two years. And I look forward to working with you, deputy mayor-elect, deputy mayor-elect, right? Because he won't be a deputy mayor until the beginning of next year. I look forward to working with you, deputy mayor-elect J. Raj, in that role to ensure that we have a strong relationship between mayor's office and council and that we are serving the public in the best way that we can. And thank you all. Thank you all. That is sometimes a cumbersome or clumsy process, but I think we went through it the best way that we possibly could. And I also want to say thank you to councilmember Sterns and councilmember Trout Manual for your willingness to be considered for deputy mayor. As deputy mayor Decourcy said, it is not a role to be taken lightly, and I do appreciate your willingness to step forward for that role. Thank you. All right, we will move on to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. The public can provide in-person or submitted written comments in advance. Participants can submit written comments via mail, fax, or email. All written comments must be received prior to 5:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Please mail comments to City of Auburn, Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 25 West Main Street, Auburn, Washington, 98001. Fax comments to Attention, Sean Campbell, City Clerk, 2538043116. Or email comments to publiccomments@auburnlaw.gov. Sean, did we have any written comments this evening?
No written comments, ma'am.
All right. We will hold in-person public comments, and please remember that comments are limited to three minutes and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Virginia Howburn, 2503 R St., Southeast Auburn. I have a bag of masks here. The first one is the one that I have received each time I've been in a public building. Some of them I wore, some of them I didn't. There are 10 of these, by the way. I'm not going to pull them all out, but I have 10 more that I've picked up in various places around Auburn at Fred Meyer, at Safeway, down by the hospital over by the train station. I was at Safeway this afternoon. There was an altercation. Someone tried to steal someone's groceries. It was a group of about four people. The altercation got so bad that a delivery driver jumped out of his truck to try to stop it. Of course, many of us were a little frightened when it happened right in front of a doorway that we were trying to go through. All four of those people were wearing masks. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on. We have no correspondence for this evening. Council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council, if any. We have one current ad hoc committee that is for finance, and it is chaired by councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, your honor. The council ad hoc finance committee consisting of councilmember J. Raj and myself reviewed 52 pages of 2021 claims vouchers totaling $6.2 million dated December 6, 2021. The committee also reviewed payroll vouchers for the period September 11 through November 23, 2021, in the total amount of $2.8 million, which included regular payrolls, comp time, cash outs, and avoiding and reissuance of stale checks. We did not have any questions of the finance department, and we recommend council approval of these vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Baggett. All right, we will move to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Deputy Mayor Decourcy.
Thank you, mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you, your honor. I'll second that motion.
Thank you, deputy mayor Decourcy.
Thank you, mayor. The consent agenda for this evening consists of the minutes of November 8, 2021, and November 22, 2021 study sessions, minutes of the November 15, 2021 regular council meeting, and the claims vouchers and payroll vouchers as described by councilmember Baggett and the finance committee's recommendation for approval by the council.
Thank you. Council, are there any questions or any items you would like to consider separately from the consent agenda? Councilmember Trout Manual.
I'm sorry, mayor. I was trying to lower my hand.
Oh, okay. All right, any questions or comments? All right, hearing and seeing none. If you would all please unmute. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. The consent agenda is passed unanimously. We have no unfinished business, so moving to ordinances, ordinance number 6840, and ordinance relating to planning, adopting 2020 Annual Comprehensive Plan Map and Text Amendments pursuant to the provisions of RCW Chapter 36.70A and adopting corresponding rezone related to certain map amendments. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, your honor. I move to adopt ordinance number 6840.
Thank you. Do we, councilmember Trout Manual for a second?
I second that, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, your honor. This ordinance amends the 2020 Comprehensive Plan to incorporate city-initiated comprehensive plan policy, text, and map changes that were developed as part of the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Plan Process.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure, is this because the the title that I read said for 2020, should that have been 2021? For the annual comprehensive plan map and text amendments? I wondered about that, but.
Yes, it should be. It's a good correction.
Thank you. So we will take that as the motion that is before you is for adopting the 2021 Annual Comprehensive Plan Map. Councilmember Trout Manual.
Again, my hand didn't go down.
Okay, all right. I just didn't want to miss it if you had a question or a comment. All right, we had a motion and a second, and the explanation, correct? Yes. All right, are there any questions or comments? All right, if you would unmute, all those in favor of ordinance number 6840, please say aye.
Aye.
All.
All opposed, please say no. All right, motion 6840 that I believe took up a majority of your packet was passed. Ordinance number 6841, an ordinance amending sections 19.02.115, and 19.02.140 of the Auburn City Code relating to school impact fees. Councilmember Sterns.
We're here. All right, thank you, your honor. I move to adopt ordinance number 6841.
Thank you. Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to second that motion, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, your honor. Ordinance number 6841 amends the existing school impact fees contained in Chapter 19.02 of the Auburn City Code, last adopted during the 2020 Annual Comprehensive Plan Process. Staff presented the school impact fees at the November 8, 2021 city council study session.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Right, if you would please unmute, all those in favor of ordinance number 6841, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Ordinance sixty-eight forty-one passes unanimously. Ordinance number sixty-eight forty-three, an ordinance relating to fee codes and amending sections nineteen point zero two point zero seven zero, nineteen point zero four point zero four zero, nineteen point zero six point zero four zero, nineteen point zero eight point zero three zero, fifteen point zero seven point zero eight zero, thirteen point zero six point zero five zero, thirteen point zero six point two seven five, thirteen point two zero point two zero zero, and thirteen point four one point zero four zero of the Auburn City Code. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to adopt ordinance six eight four three.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance amends several chapters of the Auburn City Code for the purposes of creating consistency in the timing of when development fees are assessed and collected.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? All right, if you would please unmute, all those in favor of ordinance number sixty-eight forty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All.
All opposed, please say no. Ordinance sixty-eight forty-three passes unanimously. Moving to resolutions. Resolution number fifty-six thirty-three, a resolution endorsing use of the twenty-twenty-two Valley Regional Fire Authority fee schedule as adopted by the Valley Regional Fire Authority Board of Governance. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to move the adoption of resolution fifty-six thirty-three.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
I will second.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution number fifty-six thirty-three will replace the current Valley Regional Fire Authority fees scheduled with revised twenty-twenty-two Verfa fee schedule. The fee schedule was revised and adopted by the Verfa Governance Board as part of the annual update process. It's important to note that the Valley Regional Fire Authority was established in two thousand and seven as a fire authority that serves the cities of Auburn, Algonia, and Pacific. As a fire authority, Verfa operates as a separate municipal corporation with independent taxing authority and within an independent taxing district. While Verfa is a separate fire authority and is organizationally independent from the city of Auburn, Verfa continues to have a role in reviewing development proposals and conducting inspections during the construction process. While Verfa is a separate agency with separate governance board that has the authority to establish its own service fees, the Auburn City Council has a role in endorsing fees that are collected by the city and distributed to other agencies, similar to the council's role in reviewing school district fees and taking action to authorize the collection of these fees.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Are there any questions or comments from council? Right, if you would please unmute, all those in favor of resolution number fifty-six thirty-three, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution number fifty-six thirty-three passes unanimously. And the last item this evening, resolution number fifty-six thirty-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Auburn and the Auburn Symphony Orchestra for Tourism Promotion Services. Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number five six three four.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Decoursey.
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember J. Raj.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Auburn supports the Auburn Symphony Orchestra, and their presence in Auburn contributes to the economy. It is proposed that the city enters into a contract with Auburn Symphony Orchestra for a stroke services that covers marketing, outreach, and amplification of the arts. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Questions or comments, council? All right, if you would please unmute, all those in favor of resolution number fifty-six thirty-four, please say aye.
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 All opposed, please say no. Resolution number fifty-six thirty-four passes. Kendra, do you want to do the closed session before the council member reports or after? You have a preference? Council, we are in need of a closed session this evening. I will ask your preference. Would you prefer to do council reports and then adjourn to closed session? Or would you prefer to do it the other way? Deputy Mayor Decoursey.
I would suggest we do council reports and then executive session.
All right. Just wanted to give you an opportunity. All right, so we will move to council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed position on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And we will begin with Deputy Mayor Decoursey.
Thank you, Mayor. On November seventeenth, I attended my last participation in the King County Affordable Housing Committee. The significance of what we accomplished at that committee, and excuse me, I have to look the other way because I have my notes on the other side here. The, after a very, very strenuous, if you will, kind of a review and process with a number of different amendments as recommended by various agencies and groups and organizations and individuals, we agreed on the state legislative priorities for twenty-twenty-two. Those legislative priorities included increasing capital resources for affordable housing, which is increasing the existing funding sources like the Housing Trust Fund and authorizing new progressive sources that do not disappropriately burden low-income households to the greatest extent possible and to ensure new housing revenue tools so we can maintain flexibility in capital investments across the region for affordable housing and also for projects that promote access to opportunity, anti-displacement, and wealth-building opportunities for Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities. Secondly, we agree that we would support local jurisdictions' planning for increasing affordable housing. This again relates to funding for local jurisdictions and the opportunity to look at the comprehensive plans to increase affordable housing and to counter displacement. And this, this funding would also support the implementation of the twenty-twenty-one Joint Bill twelve twenty. And then lastly, and this is a long process, but summarizing lastly, is the support for housing stability through tenant protections and through the COVID-nineteen recovery. As we're still recovering from the pandemic, the committee agreed that we still need resources for stability in housing and for strengthening current pandemic-related renter protections. And then also lastly, to pass the Housing Justice Act that bans discrimination against renters based on a prior criminal record. So significant changes of going forward with that. A number of us are retiring from the committee, and there are new committee members that have been appointed. I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Sterns for being appointed an alternate member of the Affordable Housing Committee. And Councilmember Sterns, you'll be a welcome member of the committee. And I am there to answer questions if you need me. So thank you very much. That's my report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Trout Manuel.
On December second, I attended my last Regional Law and Safety and Justice Committee. And as Mr. Decoursey, Deputy Mayor Decoursey, mentioned, there were several of us that were leaving our longtime service commitment. And it's going to be sad because that is one of my best committees that I have been on, but we really didn't cover very much what they had a panel for the Gender and Justice Commission. They talked a lot about the MRT, which is the Moral Reconnection Therapy that they're giving domestic violence individuals. And they have to sign a contract for two, three, and four years. And they have to complete these. And they have a very high successful rate on people completing it. There was fifty-six of them that dropped out right away. They could not go to the meetings and attend the strict rules that they have. But overall, it's a very good program. They're really promoting it out of WSU. And that's about my, well, and I do want to say, we had a very successful Christmas parade and tree lighting service event. Even though it rained a little bit, it was, it was a very well-intended event. It was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trout Manuel. Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. And good evening, everyone. My report involves a December second meeting of the Pierce County Cities and Towns Association. And our guest speaker that evening was Candace Bach from AWC. And basically went through the legislative agenda planning and priorities for the year twenty-twenty-two. A reminder to everybody that the January tenth is the date when the session will begin. It'll be a sixty-day session of our legislature. And it will be virtual for most, most of the people that are planning to participate. And reminding everybody that twenty-twenty-two is an election year. So there, there will be some changes coming down the line. On a, on a positive note, the budget that they have prepared is on a positive note. In fact, they have about nine hundred million dollars more in the budget available than they had in twenty-twenty-one. The state, the, one of the things that they, they included in here was passing a transportation package that was high on their list to ensure a basic infrastructure funding package, also to protect the Transportation Benefit District Funding Authority and those of the local authorities as well. Kind of important, but not placed on the highest priority was law enforcement use of force clarifications by the legislature. I thought that was very important. Also, they wanted to discuss the Open Public Meeting Act, the Blake Decision and the city impacts. And for those not familiar with the Blake Decision, that has to do with the the criminalization of drug use in our cities, which has been a topic of discussion for some time since that decision came out. Also zoning mandates. Their recommendation is don't mandate, but incentivize. Also, we, we talked a little bit about the AWC City Action Days that's coming up on January twenty-seventh, where many of the cities get involved. This will be, for the most part, virtual. And it'll be Fridays from twelve-thirty PM and between January fourteenth to March fifth. After that presentation by Kathy, I think Candace, I'm sorry. Kathy Hayden was elected as my alternate for the Board of Health for twenty-twenty-two. And she is mayor-elect of Sumner. So she'd be a welcome addition to our Board of Health. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move to Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have a report tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sterns.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple things. On December first, I attended a meeting of the Regional Water Quality Committee. And the big news is that the county has put the Clean Water Plan on pause. And so the, the goal is for the Waste Treatment Division to really to take, take time to sort of let some of the big uncertainties resolve, and those are, they're really two major ones. One is the Nutrient General Permit, and the second is consent decree negotiations for combined sewer overflow. So the pause is supposed to last a few months at least. The nutrient permit actually just did get released late last week. So that more shall be revealed. Secondly, for Ryan Nine, just wanted to let everyone know that the Washington delegation, at least most of the delegation, but including our senators and Congresswoman Schreier and Smith, they all sent a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers and the White House asking that construction of the Howard Hansen Fish Passage Facility be included in the infrastructure bill. So there, there's hope for that. On December second, I attended the Peterstown Regional Council's Equity Advisory Committee. That was our second meeting. And we agreed to create some subgroups and, and to work on equity analysis and equity tools, something that, you know, you're all familiar with. And they were all amazed by all the training we went through. So that, that was pretty cool, too. And also on December second and December third, I attended the first meeting of the Attorney General's Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Peoples Task Force. And I served on that as the designee of the Association of Washington Cities. And so we, we heard a lot from victims, from, well, from the families and loved ones of victims, of people who've been murdered or who've gone missing. And it was really good to see that Councilmember Anita Mitchell from the Muckleshoot Tribe, she's a member of the task force. And we heard testimony on day one from Rosalie Fish. She's a young woman from the Muckleshoot Reservation. And she talked specifically about Renee Davis, who was shot by the King County Sheriff and Miss Yop, who was a really, actually a very inspiring Native American actress who was nominated for an Oscar. And she went missing and was found by family members on, on the reservation. She'd been missing for a while. So there's a lot of work to do on all of those things, and I continue to look forward to it. And just, and just quickly wanted to thank Deputy Mayor for offering any advice and help on the Housing Affordability Committee. Looking forward to that and congratulate, and lastly, congratulate my colleague James J. Raj for his election to be Deputy Mayor. I'm sure he'll be great. So thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Malanga.
Nothing to report, Your Honor. Thanks.
All right, thank you. I'll just go over a couple of items so we can get to the closed session. On Friday, November nineteenth, our Equity and Inclusion Manager Brenda Goodson-Moore was hosting. It was remote, it wasn't here in person, but was hosting the Governing for Racial Equity and Inclusion meeting. And so I offered a welcome. Their topic for this session was on technology and how we can better use technology and some of the, some of the needs in technology for doing the diversity, equity, and inclusion work. It was, it was a great session. Unfortunately, I couldn't stay for the whole thing, but they, they came up with a lot of great ideas for how to better utilize technology in, in this very important work that we have in front of us. And on Saturday, the twentieth, we are getting back into some ribbon cuttings, council. Oh, did I not call on Councilmember J. Raj? I'm sorry. I will, I, you will, right after I'm done. I am so sorry. I had it listed in order, my apologies. The Air House Adventure Grand Opening and ribbon cutting at the Outlet Collection inside Fieldhouse USA. And this is a fun place for And this is a fun place for kids to go for birthday parties or just a fun afternoon, kids of all age. I encourage you to take a look at that as one of our newest businesses here in Auburn. And then on Wednesday, the twenty fourth, the day prior to Thanksgiving, I always look forward to helping out at the Auburn Food Bank as they provide their holiday food baskets. Always am so impressed by how many people come out to volunteer for our community members who are in need of a good, healthy meal for their family as they come together to celebrate the holidays. And I also, as um, as Councilmember Trump Manuel mentioned, the Santa Parade and Tree Lighting, I want to say a special thank you to all of our team members who work so hard to make this a success, especially Amanda Valdez, Julie Kruger and Kristy Pichars, who just do such an amazing job on our, our large events. It snowed in downtown Auburn. I don't know how many of you saw that, but it snowed. We had a great band, Santa Claus. We all know him. Santa Claus was here. He's now back at the North Pole getting ready for the big day. Councilmember J. Raj, my apologies. I will stop there and I will turn it over to you for your report. And if you say no report, Your Honor, I'm just gonna...
Actually, I was about to say that, but I do. Um thank you, Your Honor. Um I attended on December first, the SCA Annual Meeting. And uh the highlight was uh the retirement of our Deputy Mayor, DeCoursey. And uh, and they honored him with that, with, with his service for all these years. And I really appreciated that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember J. Raj. Thank you for your grace. And thank you for, for filling in me for that evening. I do appreciate it. All right, we are in need, as I mentioned, Council, for a closed session. The City Council will adjourn into a closed session per RCW forty-two point three zero point one four zero uh Perrin four, Perrin B for a discussion on collective bargaining for thirty minutes. We will need City Attorney Como, Finance Director Thomas, Human Resources Director Martenson and uh Police Chief Callier uh in attendance. And Council, you did receive a link for attending the closed session, so we will all need to log off for this. We will come back. There is no action taking place out of this closed section, closed session. Uh but we will come back to adjourn the meeting. So Council, I will see you momentarily in the closed session.
Larry, you were really quick.
Yeah, I may have to relinquish my title as Quick Draw.
All right, we are back from our closed session and with that return I will adjourn us for the evening.